Oh, sorry. Go ahead and call the meetings your order. Sorry about that, Matt. I know I blew your ear off there. I believe we have Celia Josie, is that it? It is Jose from the Liberal Catholic Church. Thank you, Celia, for being here. And if all of you, whoever's willing and able to stand for the pledge of allegiance and the prayer.
Which goes first? Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and all here present, may we all give thanks for this opportunity to be here today and listen and speak with an open mind and a clear heart. May the holy ones whose pupils we aspire to become show us the light we seek, give us the strong aid of their compassion and their wisdom. There's a peace that passeth all understanding. It abides in the hearts that live in the eternal. There's a power that maketh all things new. It lives and moves in those who know the self as one. May that peace go over us, that power uplift us, till we stand where the one initiator is invoked, till we see his star shine forth. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Celia. Okay, first item is roll call. Adriana, if you can accept for the record, all members here except council member Huddleston, and if we can get a motion to excuse Huddleston, Mr. Huddleston.
So moved.
There's been a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item are the minutes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve the minutes for the city council regular meeting of April 12th, 20, or of April 21st, 2025, as presented, and approve the minutes of the city councils, of the city council study session of April 16th, 2025, and accept for the record the minutes for the Historic Preservation Commission meeting of March 24th, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, if we can actually, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The claims.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve the list of claims for April 16th through the 29th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If we can, if all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approval of the claims. Next is the meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move that we would move item K2 to be considered before item K1 in the sequence of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to move item K2 before K1. Anyone that wants to stay for the budget afterwards, that's, you're more than welcome. But any further discussion on that? Okay, all of those in favor of amending the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. No special presentations. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Are there any changes or would anyone like to pull anything on the consent agenda?
No.
Anyone on council, any staff, or anyone from the public? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
A second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedellin?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda are the public comments. I know I have several speaker cards here, and I believe most of these are for K2, the item, although there might be, there might be a couple. Is there, if there's anyone that is speaking beside, not on the K2 item, if you would like to come up and speak right now. It might be Barbara Sundust. Thank you, Barbara. And Barbara, if you can please give your address, your name and address when you come up, please.
My name is Barbara Sundust, and I live at 1273 East Cordova Avenue in Casa Grande, Arizona, 85122. I am involved heavily in the Laundry Love program in Casa Grande, so we have done laundry for the unhoused and families that can't afford to do their own laundry for over 10 years. Recently, I'll just give you just the recent totals, just for awareness sake, I guess. On April 30th, we served 101 people, did 560 loads of wash, and to the cost of $1,962. The April, total for April was 168 served, 979 loads of wash, $3,307. And I guess the reason I'm saying that is because the people we serve are not only homeless. It started off as being a program for homeless people, but now we serve also families that can't afford to do laundry for their children. And for me, the reason I'm here this time is really to talk about my biggest concern, and that is the unhoused women, especially older women who are living in their cars, and cannot, and have, they cannot afford, they get social security, but they cannot afford to rent anyplace. They can't afford to go anyplace. So my plea really is that in Casa Grande, we need some kind of a women's shelter where they have at least a room and, and a community place for them to cook together, and so they have some kind of a personal place for themselves. One lady, and I mean, I've been doing this for like 10 years, like I said, and so I know these people really well. One lady, this just happened recently, she wrote this about a month ago. "I'm 69 years old with heart failure. I use oxygen at night. Last week, my house burned down, and I have nowhere to go. My social security $980 is not enough to rent an apartment. I have no idea where to turn for help for me with housing. The shame that in this great America, this is possible." And another person that I'm very well acquainted with lives in her car, and the car doesn't move, so she's living someplace now. In order for her to come to Laundry Love, she has to walk. Does that mean I can't talk?
Go ahead and finish your.
Oh, okay. Well, she, and so I talked to her, and she said like she would be willing to pay like $400, half of her social security, if she had a place. Then she could get her car fixed, then she could get a job. So how can you get a job if you live in your car? So anyway, my plea really is for some kind of a women's shelter. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that's here to speak not on item K2, if you would like to come up? And please give your name and address.
Hello, councilwoman mayor. My name is Peter Encinas, 1070 West Falls Canyon Drive. I attend a church called Fire on the Altar on Rodeo and Treacle. It's in the one plaza that's on those four corners. We had our grand opening for that building several months ago. You, Madam Mayor, were there to speak. We do the show far. Several pastors showed up from many churches around the community, and we recently got our final inspection, so hallelujah to that. We're so happy. The pastor asked me to, to create an event for the church, so I said, okay. So we created an event, a revival night, that's going to be happening May 18th at 6:00 p.m., May 18th at 6:00 p.m., called Night of Overflow and Holy Fire. The coolest thing is I've never planned a revival in my life, so I don't know exactly what I'm doing, but we're rolling with it. And I was praying about it, and the Lord said to me in prayers, the city, he always brings it back to the city, the importance of the city. So as I sought it out with the pastors and the leaders there, the pastor and the leader, we said, it's not about our church, just our church to get revival. We want this revival to fire and come into this amazing city that we have with all these great leaders and the people here. So we're having this event, and I'm opening up here to, on this broadcast, to open the event to like the city. Obviously, everybody's invited to the church that night to come in, in this revival event. We went open to other churches, like for example, Pastor Edwards, if you wanted to come that night, bring your choir or your worship team, I don't know how you guys do it over there, give a five-minute word on stage, and then say like, this is our choir, this is how we do it at our church. We would love to be blessed with that, with that kind of environment, of other churches coming together in Casa Grande, because I've learned there's so much Jesus in this city. It's amazing. I've been here for several years, and it's just, it's so cool to just see that we can always come back to Jesus as a family, this community, and I love it. And so if anybody's watching this, or anybody's interested in registering your church, it's Fire on the Altar Church. Our service is 10:00 a.m. on Sundays. I'm usually there by nine. I stay afterwards. If you want to visit our church, you have the time there, 10:00 a.m. This obviously is Mother's Day, this, this Sunday. I'll be giving the message, hallelujah. It's my first time, my first official preaching ever in a church house, so I'm excited for that. And so I just want to invite everybody watching, and any churches that are interested, come find us, and we hope to let this revival just go through the city of Casa Grande, for the glory of God to be on this city. And I thank all you civil servants and everybody here in the city. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else that's not here, not speaking on K2? Okay, so we will go ahead. The next on the agenda is item K2. So Larry, do you want to kick that off?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and distinguished guests with us this evening. I had rehearsed the entire weekend, a transition from the, from the budget to the bond, but given the number of folks that are here, and some of them actually sat through our study session on development impact fees, they thought we would make a change. And so, so I'm, what I'm going to do, because I think it's important, is I want to spend just a few minutes on our capital improvement program in our proposed fiscal year 26 budget, which anybody that'd like to, to stick around, it's, we've, we've got a number of slides that we'll be presenting. But ultimately, I think that, given the, given the circumstances and, and the, and the considerations the mayor and council will be making on this proposed general obligation bond, I will start with capital improvements. Obviously, our capital improvement program in the community has, has really driven our budgets the last three or four years. We have, we have been, we have been exceeding the $200 million mark each year in what we've asked council to, to authorize. And just to give everybody a context, in fiscal year 26, there is no difference. We have $242,314,346 that we are proposing in capital improvement program. $123,000, 123.9 is actually a carryforward from 25. Those are the projects that are underway now that aren't going to be completed, a, a number of big projects, primarily our water reclamation facility and all the work that we've been working on this. But a number of, about $118 million in new projects for fiscal year 26, and I'll spend just a few minutes talking about those. Oh, I've got the clicker. Sorry, Stephen. Just very quickly, the, you, you see that the lion's share of the, of the capital improvement program is allocated to our, to our Public Works Department. Obviously, they oversee the roads, the wastewater, the water, and the like. And so there's a lion, there's a lion's share. But I think the message, and I'll get into a little depth here in a little, in, in a second, that talks a little bit about the broad-based approach. I, I believe this year, every one of our departments has some type of a capital project that they've got underway, and some of those that I want to highlight. You'll notice the, the $33 million in the city manager's budget. That is, I, I don't, I don't want anybody to get any false conclusions that we are, that we've got a heavy lift there. We have a $15 million water project, which is ARPA funds that's, that we're partnering with Arizona Water, and we've got other projects that ultimately are just passed through. So understand that. But you'll see that in, when we did our community survey a number of months ago, our, our residents were pretty, pretty loud and, and voiced the fact that they want us to focus on public safety. And, and when we get back to the budget, you'll see the allocation in public safety. They, they typically receive the lion's share of our, of our revenues that are allocated. But, but they also wanted us to focus on capital, primarily roadways. And so I think that becomes important as we move forward, and, but we also know that there's a need for other types of amenities, and tonight we'll be considering one of those as well. This just talks about the various funds that are utilized to fund these capital projects. I think the important message that I want to deliver on this particular, obviously, it's capital project funds, that's plural, because there's multiple funds there. The mayor and council had a presentation on development impact fees, which is essentially a fee that new development pays to ensure that we continue to have amenities in the community to the same levels our residents enjoy, enjoy today. So development impact fees are bundled in there, the projects that are going to be done through other bonds, such as Treacle Road, such as McCartney Road, and, and, and the like. And obviously, you see the next at 47.8 million with enterprise funds. The lion's share there is for our continued efforts on the wastewater work that's being done, the expansion of the plant, and the main lines that will, that we need to build in town. I, I want to highlight this slide because it speaks to my comment about the study just a minute ago, and, and the amount of funds that we anticipate, and these are tax dollars. These are yourselves' tax dollars that are being paid when people are shopping in Casa Grande. We have, we've got roughly $95.8 million in, in new roadway improvements proposed. And again, I'll, I'll highlight a little bit, specific details here in a bit. But as you can see, we've got public safety, we've got recreation. That, this is not including, the 8.2 million is not including the, the, the geo-bond that'll be considered tonight, primarily because the majority of those funds would be expended in our next fiscal year. The, we have facilities improvements, vehicle, vehicle and equipment replacements. The airport, $33 million, I recognize that's a very big number, and I don't want to set the wrong expectation. The city believes that we're going to be back in the good graces of the FAA, and we'll be able to apply for federal and state grants this year. And so we've allocated, we've, we're asking for allocation of budget authority should we get those grants. But let me spend just a few minutes on the work that we're going to be doing in more detail here. And I've broken these down by categories, but you can see the Treacle and McCartney Road improvements. Obviously, that is a multi-year project. Treacle Road north of Rodeo is, is underway today. They're making very good progress on that particular piece of infrastructure. That will be followed immediately from the segment on McCartney behind, from Panal to Treacle. And, and ultimately, there will be additional phases from Treacle, from Treacle Road all the way out to Interstate 10. We are discussing the phases today, but there are a couple of challenges in that particular corridor. Number one, we have state land that, that we have to ultimately get right away from, which is not always the, the most seamless task. And we've got a significant drainage structure that, on the Pirt Road area that would need to be built. And so more information on that, but we ultimately anticipate that we will be able to start with, have, have design progress and have our contractors working with them through the methodology to keep that road moving in various segments. We also have portions of Quartzon Road, $3 million to do resurfacing. We've got $5.2 million of portions of Thornton Road. We've, we've seen from Peters Road, we now will continue to Gila Ben Highway, and ultimately up to Cottonwood, making improvements in that area. There are improvements at Mission Parkway and the Cottonwood Lane intersection, where you have that single stop sign today for those individuals that are trying to turn left out of that. There's some improvements that need to be made there. There is a roundabout at, at Ash. That particular project is being funded through federal dollars that we were able to receive. That's what's driving that. We have the expansion of Peters Road of $9 million in our industrial corridor. We have $4 million that is budgeted on the Florence Boulevard streetscape. The lion's share of that is for some aesthetic improvements that were, that will be done, like signage and the like, and the design that will start. And $4 million, new traffic signals. And just to give everybody a context, each traffic signal these days, the lowest price you're going to pay is about a million dollars, and some of these, depending on the conflicts that you might find at those intersections, can be as high as $2 million. Under wastewater, we'll be carrying forward the $24 million for the wastewater expansion. We'll, we're, we're building a new lift station at Quartzon Road of $4.2 million. We've got Treacle Road sewer improvement upgrades between, I believe it's between Quartzon and McCartney at 6.6. And again, these are, these are expansions to the main sewer infrastructure, the trunks in those areas for future development. In community services, we have, the, the project sizes get a bit smaller, but we're looking to make some big impacts with many of these. 1.45 billion carried forward. The mayor and council recall that we, we budgeted 1.5 million in fiscal year 25. We've started the design work on that, so we'll get, we'll get those pickleball courts built this year. 1.4 million on park amenity upgrades. And this is an important element because, and the council got to hear earlier this evening, the, about the amount of land and the number of parks that Casa Grande have, has. And I don't know that most individuals recognize that when you compare the amount of land and amenities that the city has to other cities, we, we really have many, many more, to the point that we can even have some discussions about not adding parkland to our development impact fees. But many of those areas are in need, desperate need of repairs. And so we've been putting money into these, into what I consider to be an existing park maintenance program to add amenities and upgrade the ADA and the like. We've been doing that systematically with, with tax dollars. For those golfers, we have new carts. We have irrigation improvements and some clubhouse improvements. We have a half a million dollars in urban trail improvements, doing a segment each year. We have a little over a half a million dollars of improvements to our main and Vista Library upgrades. And we have upgrades, who would have guessed that when we built the rec center, that there would be such the demand that we see by our, by our community? And we're actually going to be making some modifications and adding additional equipment in our, in our community recreation center, and we're, and we propose to make some improvements to our Dorothy Powell Center as well. In public safety, we are, are really going to have a heavy focus on Fire Station 501, and this is just the carryover. We've got $4.1 million in new fire apparatus. We've got crime prevention technologies in the police department of about a quarter of a million. We have new patrol cars, adding that to the, adding new cars to the fleet to, to have a, have an office for our 10 new police officers that we've hired under a cops grant. We're making some, some much-needed improvements to the animal care center this year, and we ultimately will, and while we anticipate receiving our command center this year, which is the carryforward on that side. And then in community enhancements, we will continue with the, the $1 million with the City Hall Campus Plan, but quite frankly, the lion's share of that is to decide, is to ultimately resolve the, the space issue with the auditorium, what we're going to do with that. We've got $990,000 for a downtown lighting project. That's one of the, one of the concerns that were expressed in the study, is we need better lighting in the downtown, so we're doing that. And we've also added $300,000 to start a downtown master plan. So all of those projects are highlighted. And I think it's important, when you look at the $231 million, it's important to send the message of, of really how broad this is. I, I, let me just talk very quickly on this, mayor and council, because I think it's important, and it kind of sets up the, the general obligation question specifically. But most in our community know that our council has been very conservative fiscally in, in the 23 years that I've been here. And a number of years ago, the council passed a resolution that would set aside 50% of the operational general fund expenses into a reserve for economic downturns and the like. There's some other provisions that allow you to ultimately use that for budget expenditures. And to give everyone a context, that would, that would average about $38 million if we had that 50%, that 50% threshold established. It's, it's become, it's become very clear to, to the staff, and I know to mayor and council through our budget retreat discussions, that perhaps with the demand that we have on, on capital infrastructure and improvements, that we should buy that down a bit this year, and maybe in future years as well. But we ultimately are giving ourselves But we ultimately are giving ourselves the provision in this year's budget resolution, in the tentative budget, to actually take that down to the thirty percent range, which means that we would utilize fifteen million dollars. And as you can see, it's a combination of roadway improvement projects, as well as beautification projects, I will call that, and a focus on public safety again. And so, some of the, obviously, there was some discussions with the mayor and council members in the budget retreat and the like, to establish this, but ultimately, what we're proposing to do is some work in areas of our community that the connection has not been made on these roadway pieces of infrastructure, because development has not occurred. We're essentially accelerating some roadway improvement projects. And so we've taken a number of areas, O'Neal from Pueblo to Pierrot. We've taken Colorado from Cottonwood Lane to O'Neal. You can see both of those ranging from two point two million to three point five million. Traffic signal at Hacienda and Florence Boulevard at one point five million. That is an ADOT project, that is a state route, but ultimately, we are going to bring money to the table, because we feel like it doesn't get done in the very near term. But essentially, encouraging that a traffic signal gets built there. I know those, I know all of you and staff hears regularly from the individuals that live in Mission Royale about that. Enhance the roadway signage, one of the topics that has been brought up by the council as we were going through our strategic planning sessions, is that we needed to accelerate our roadway signs. We have five hundred thousand dollars budgeted in this year's budget. This is an acceleration of an additional five hundred thousand, so a million dollars on roadway signs. We have improvements at Mission Parkway and Cottonwood, I talked a little bit about that. We need to have some, we'll have some discussions with the council on the scope, but we believe that million may be necessary. Quartzon Road improvements from Colorado to Pierrot, that is just the segment from Colorado to Pierrot, widening that area there. We believe that we can make some improvements for about two point five million dollars. We've estimated the cost of Quartzon Road from, through the entire community, it's about thirty million, just to give everybody the context of that. But we believe that that segment is something with all the other work. We've been working with ED2 to relocate those power lines. It may activate that area for development and solve some of the intersection issues that we have. This entire plan was really, the impetus was last year, we had seven million dollars left, the council allocated that to roadway improvements. The lion's share of those have been done, there's a few more that have to be done in this fiscal year, but ultimately, the concepts are very similar here. We also are recommending that we add a million dollars to the beautification of Palm Mason Sportsplex in the area there. Obviously, that's a fantastic amenity for the community, but there is some work that needs to be done, and particularly, if we're going to be building additional facilities out there, just making that a grander entrance into the community up in Al as well as into the complex, will be important. And then finally, I talked about the five million dollars, it is a carryover, we're adding three out of this particular plan, and we'll leverage the rest with development impact fees, because we'll be expanding the square footage of that facility when we do build it. And so, that ultimately is the proposal, that the fifteen million dollar proposal that we'd look to buy down the reserve fund with. And so, to get everybody into an understanding of what we're proposing in our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, for the particular project that was introduced on April the twenty-first, and I know that there were a few members in the audience that attended that particular presentation, but at April twenty-first, Danny Gallegos, our community service director, outlined a project that we believe is much needed. Staff has identified these projects in our capital improvement program, and what a general obligation bond does is allow us to accelerate it. Otherwise, we're paying as you go, and you're adding, you're building a component here and a component there. You saw the numbers that were introduced, those were new cost estimates, I'm not saying that's going to be our final estimate, our final cost, but ultimately, it gave us something to work from. But ultimately, what was proposed was that we would construct four new baseball softball fields, and three multi-use fields at the, at Hooper Park, Palm Mason, adjacent to the Palm Mason Sportsplex. Those particular amenities, along with, and I think it's important to note this, the parking areas, the restrooms, the infrastructure, the lights, and the like, is estimated at forty million dollars. We've also heard through a variety of surveys on our community master plan, community services master plan, that a new aquatic center, something that would allow for lap swimming and recreational types of pools and the like would be necessary. And we actually did some research and found a couple of cities in the valley that have just finished their projects at about twenty-seven million dollars. So ultimately, about sixty-seven million dollars worth of projects. And ultimately, we need to find a financing stream to fund those, to accelerate those to today. What we have done is we've budgeted four million dollars in fiscal year twenty-six budget to do, to really start the design. And I know that Councilman Bedillon would certainly stress that he wants to make sure that we've got a partnership, a team with the contractor onboard as we start that. And so we have not finalized the procurement method that we will utilize, but certainly, the alternative methods give us some flexibility to bring a contractor and a design firm onboard and begin to do some design in fiscal year twenty-six. What I did not, the reason we've added this, and this is a new addition to the budget retreat, the reason we've added this is that if we are successful at a general obligation bond in November, I did not want that to be T zero when starting that day. We can actually begin to accelerate some of the work in advance and the like. And so with that, I'm going to ask Stephen to switch slideshows, very briefly here, and I'm going to focus specifically on the general obligation bond component of this. And I've talked a little bit already about the project scope, I've talked about the project estimated cost, and let me spend just a minute speaking specifically about general obligation bonds, and I think that's the other one, Stephen. Nick, we'll cover that one next. Thank you. So as we began to put together a strategy in a very short timeframe, staff had dialogue with our internal and external teams, and ultimately, came to the conclusion that one ballot measure would be the best approach in asking for these general font, these general obligation authority. But there's a number of statutes that drive this. The city of Casa Grande has utilized general obligation bonding in the past. I think our most successful, obviously, was when we had our two thousand and six election. It funded projects like the rec center, the expansion to the Lynn Colas Center, it funded the public safety facility, and some golf course improvements and the like. And so that debt is still outstanding, we have some outstanding debt in those, but ultimately, that will continue to fall off as we service the debt each year. And in twenty twenty-two, we were, our voters agreed that we wanted to get the roadways improved in front, by the Casa Grande Union High School on Treacle and McCartney, and so we have that, we have, but the city of Casa Grande has utilized general obligation bond financing very strategically over the years. And really, what's driven that more than anything is the council's desire to attempt to maintain property tax rates and the like. And so, but when you look at growing municipalities, the reality of it is that you have to find revenue streams to help your community build the amenities that the community is expecting. And so, from the statutory perspective, Arizona law requires city obligation bonds to be authorized by the voters, with no limit on amount that may be authorized, and no limit on the authorized debt must be issued. And so, the constitution limits par amount of general obligation bonds that may be issued at any time. So essentially, what that means is that once you receive the authorization for those particular categories, you ultimately can use them at different times. It doesn't have to be done in that specific year, although we would certainly be advocating that we would move forward very quickly with this particular project. But it does become important when you ultimately are looking at what the tax rate is going to be, and we're going to talk a little bit about that here in a second. I've talked a little bit about the procurement and design, and at least the approach that the city is proposing. I also want to highlight very, very quickly, because there's a lot of questions, we've heard questions on the partnering with our school districts. And I think it's important for everyone to know that I feel like we have a very good relationship with both of those districts. They are providing the need, the high school is constantly fielding, allowing the use of their facilities for various events and the like. The elementary school district has been very open, we've recently signed an IGA with them that allows them to, allows us to utilize some of their indoor space, which I think is going to be important. I think it's going to be very important for this incremental timeline as we continue to see new facilities coming onboard. We are beginning to have more discussions with them related to fields themselves. And so, but essentially, that is, that will be an important component regardless of what transpires with this particular effort. So why general obligation bond financing? They typically are going to offer lower interest rates, which obviously show up on your tax bill at the end of the day. You've got to pay interest on this, just like you would a mortgage. You get lower interest rates, you couple that with our fantastic bond rating that the city has, that we've been able to improve the last couple of years, and ultimately, that gets you higher buyer, more buying power. Their high creditworthiness backed by taxing power. I've mentioned that we've used the bonds strategically, but one of the important elements that I'd really like to express to the mayor and council this evening, and our FA Nick Dodd will be giving a little more detail on this here in a minute, is the assessed valuation increases that we have seen the last several years. Even since we went out in the two thousand and twenty-two bonds, there's been significant growth that transpired. So ultimately, what it does is that a general obligation bond is going to levy a secondary property tax to pay, to ultimately pay the debt each year, and it's spread across, it's spread across all of the property that has a limited value, and so, a secondary value. And so that includes residents, that includes commercial businesses, that includes the industrial projects that have come to our community. So there's a balance that transpires, obviously, there's an equation for that. But it allows government to make investments in infrastructure that improve quality of life for future years, meaning we anticipate that these types of complexes can be used for ten, twenty, thirty years. And it matches the repayment of the bonds with the benefit of the infrastructure. The number one question that always comes up, and staff has attempted to make some projections on this, and again, some of this analysis, Nick will go into a little more detail here in a second before we ask council to vote. Typically, this is subject to change based on your interest rate that you get, based on the years that you finance the debt, based on the assessed values that are currently in your year, in your community recognizes year after year. What I wanted to do is attempt to give everybody a context of what this would meant from a family, a home in our community. This particular evaluation is done based on a three hundred thousand dollar assessed value home, which is very, is very common in Casa Grande for the most part. Our current rate, that's paying for the two thousand and six bonds for the projects that I talk about, is forty-one cents, that's what we're going to ask council to approve tonight, which means it's about a hundred and twenty-five dollars per year on that home. With the rate, with the authorized debt issuance for the roads that I've talked about, again, it would go up to ninety-five cents per hundred assessed valuation, or two hundred and eighty-five dollars. And then, if council is supportive of the general obligation question tonight, which would call the election and ultimately, put the question on the ballot on November fourth, I think it is, of two thousand and twenty-five. If we issued all of that debt, and we were still paying the debt from the other two, it would roughly be five hundred and five dollars per year. That's what the cost would be to a three hundred thousand dollar home. As I say, rates will vary, these rates will vary based on a variety of factors that really are difficult for us to establish tonight, but this is based on the analyses that we've done. One other point that I want to make, because I know that there's been some discussions in the community about whether or not another financing mechanism would be more appropriate, perhaps a sales tax authorization, excise tax debt. Certainly, you could use excise tax for this particular type of a project, but quite frankly, we, from a staff's perspective, we've been anticipating that, that we've had the Penal Regional Transportation Authority, we've had other discussions about the need to perhaps find financing streams specifically for roadway improvements. We anticipated that that would, that because of the costs, and we're talking multimillions for roadways, that a stronger, something that would generate more revenue, such as the sales tax, could, would be more appropriate for that. We also, and this is a key element, council will consider this general obligation question this evening, this resolution. The reason it had to be accelerated to this particular meeting is that we have to notify Penal County by Wednesday, this Wednesday, that if we are going to have a tax question on the November ballot. General obligation tax questions can only go on a November ballot. And so, that brings us to that. And I will just say this, generally speaking, I know we've got certainly a grassroots effort of residents and individuals and groups that agree that we need these facilities, but we also have retailers and businesses in town that have expressed concern about sales tax types of increases. Particularly, there's two that I want to just touch on quickly tonight. The first is that those retailers that sell more expensive items or larger items, they're concerned that it puts Casa Grande in an uncompetitive approach when they're, when they compare our tax rates to some of the larger cities in the valley. The second is, small business typically has more issues with the tax increase, because it drives up the price of that, whatever they're selling, that item that they're attempting to sell. And so, we do hear that from a staff perspective, I'm sure the council does as well from time to time. And so, with that, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I will pause, if you have any questions on the scope, the timeline, but I'd like Nick Dodd to give just an overview on the analysis. Nick is, many of you know Nick pretty well, he's been working with us for a number of years, he hasn't aged like I have, but we've definitely done a lot of work together, and we asked Nick to quickly put together some of the analysis, and I want him to highlight the assessed values, because as your assessed value goes up, typically, your rate comes down.
Right.
And we've seen some fantastic growth in those categories, so.
Okay. Any questions for Larry before we move on at this point?
No.
No question? Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. After watching Larry's slides, I apologize in advance for the number, the small font and numbers I've jammed on through the pages, it's amazing what we can do these days. I think the city manager covered kind of geobond authorization purpose pretty comprehensively. So on page three, this is your historical values and assessed values, and there's two, just to really quickly help you understand the difference, full cash assessed value that we used to call secondary assessed value, that is the assessed value that most closely correlates to market value. Every year it can change, and it follows the market, it's unlimited by how much it can grow. The debt limits are set against the full cash assessed value. The limited property value, or the net assessed limited property value, that's what we've historically called the primary. That is capped on how much it can grow each year. So, an existing homeowner's property can only grow by five percent, and then you add new construction onto it. So if you had no new construction, your net assessed limited property value could only grow by five percent, no more, because that's what the law says. So those are the two different values, full cash drives debt limit, limited property drives tax rates. Both primary and secondary are set against those tax rates, and then they're aggregated together, and that's what each homeowner pays every year. The city manager covered debt limits, that's just a calculation of those two limits. As we went through this exercise, we did factor in the fifty-one million dollars in road bonds that were approved in two thousand and twenty-two, but have not yet been authorized, just so when you think about what kind of capacity you have, that's factored in. This is your existing debt. This is your existing debt. As mentioned, 2006 bonds, been paying off pretty quickly and will be paid off in about a decade. We do show the breakout between the 20% and the 6% just for purposes of tying out those limits that we've talked about in the past. So now the numbers get a little smaller, because there's more of them on the page, this is what I was talking about. Oh, it gets better, just wait. So, this is your existing property values and, and projections for the future. The gray shaded box is the historical going back a few years. The row in italics immediately under is the year you're considering a budget for, and then the years after that going down the page are future bonds. We, under state law, we can only assume for general obligation bond elections, certain growth. We can't just assume unlimited growth and we can't make any kind of outrageous assumptions. So we can assume the 10-year average for the next five years. And then we can assume 20% of that for every year thereafter. So, we know what the value is for the next year because the county's released that. So you see, in these projections, we assume the 6.61% for the five years were allowed, and then we assume 20% of that, which is the 1.32. And for your existing debt, we did that now, so when you look at future tax rate assumptions, we're consistent when you start to layer in those bonds that have been approved but not sold, or what you would ask the voters to, because ultimately, those same assumptions would be assumed for the voter information pamphlet. If you don't sell any bonds, your tax rate over the next decade while you pay off the 2006 bonds, on average, is 29 and a half cents. So that's what it's going to require on average every year. As the value grows, if your debt doesn't change, the tax rate will decline. And that's what you see in the blue shaded box on the right-hand side. And then we just simply calculate that average to make it easy to talk about. And, and this is some of what was factored into the city manager's presentation about costs for your existing debt. On the following page, page seven, what we've now done is tried to, before we talk about new bonds, show what would your tax rate average change as we layer in the $51 million in bonds that were approved for street projects. We just made a general assumption that you would sell it in two phases over about a two-year period. I think it's important to remember anytime staff recommends the city issue bonds, even if they've already been approved by the voters, we would come back to the council, we would share with you the implications of it, we would go through a process, we determine what the best strategy is around either tax rate goals or mitigation. So you would see these in the future when the city intends to issue them. So for purposes of this presentation, we've simply assumed a 5% interest rate, a 20-year level amortization, kind of like a mortgage. That could change in the future based on direction from council or staff at the time you issue it. So this now captures what is the cost of those park, excuse me, the street bonds. So if you remember, we had forecast about a 29 cent tax rate for the existing debt. When we factor in that future growth and 20 years for the, each series, the average tax rate is 56.87. So if you back out the 29 and a half cent from the existing debt, those street bonds, on average, over the next, you know, 20-plus years, once they're sold, would cost approximately 27, 27 and a half cents roughly. So that's the cost that's built into those street bonds approved but not yet sold, so factoring that in, because it will add, your, your secondary property tax will have to go up in order to service that debt. So now on the final page, what we've tried to do is, on the left-hand side, that is the same schedules you just looked at, but they're all aggregated into one. So now you're, you, we've assumed the 51 million in street bonds have been sold, we've assumed the same assumptions around growth, so we're consistent, that's 6.6 and 1.3. And then we've simply layered in $67 million in parks and rec bonds, similarly assumed to be amortized over 20 years at 5%, staggered in two different sales. So, under this model, you would kind of sell one geo-bond every year for four years. Street bonds, park bonds, street bonds, park bonds. They could be aggregated, if it makes sense from a timing perspective, that would be up to staff and council as you move forward in future years. And so when you, now, what we've done is, the first blue column, we've, we've separated out what the parks and rec bonds would cost, because that would go into a voter information pamphlet. So we want to be able to easily identify what are these new bonds going to the voters going to cost. And you can see that average tax rate is 55.3 cents, so .5533. So it's, it's roughly 55 cents on average over the next, this would be over about a 22-year period, because you have two bonds of 20 years each, and the average rate for those parks and rec bonds would be 55 cents. When you add that to the already outstanding debt, plus to be issued street bonds, and then you add the park bonds, on average, your tax rate would be $1.11 over the next 20 years for all existing debt and future to be issued debt. And these were the averages and the numbers that were built into the presentation and those costs that, to the homeowners that the city manager mentioned.
And Nick, if I can, just add one point to that. The numbers that, when we've estimated the impact to the, to the homeowners, is at the highest rate, not, not the average. I took it at the highest rate, just to give everybody a context of that one year of what, you know, really what the highest amount would be.
And those rates will be changed every year based on assessed value. If the city grows and booms and values grow beyond what our assumptions were in those pamphlet, your tax rates would be less. And similarly, if, if property values didn't increase or decline and you sold the bonds, without identifying alternative funding, you would have to raise your secondary or debt tax rate to cover the debt that had been sold. I know that's a lot of numbers, I tried to cover it in about 10 minutes, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We'll turn it back over to the city manager.
Okay, any questions right now?
No.
Okay, we'll turn it back to you then, Larry.
And, and, Madam Mayor, obviously, staff's recommendation is, is to, for the council to approve the resolution. It sounds like you're going to give our residents here, our citizens, an opportunity to speak. If there's questions, I might want to just have the opportunity to address a few at the end.
Okay. And I know it's not a public hearing, but we know a lot of people are here and want to give, you know, their opinions. So, I'll go ahead and go through these speaker cards, and if you can just limit your comments, you know, try to limit it to three minutes and even less. If it's something that you feel is repetitive, that people are, are talking about, just, you know, let us know. But, but of course, we want to give you the opportunity to speak tonight. So I'll go ahead and start with Ricardo Villa. And Ricardo, if you can please give us your address, please, for the record.
Ricardo Villa, 587 East Quell Drive, here in Casa Grande.
You're done. You're done. You're good.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just here really quick, members of the city council, I just want to thank you for the opportunity. I just want to tell you what I'm representing. We're representing a small soccer club called Casa Grande Rattlers. We target, we have about five teams, somewhere between 90, 100, and 20 players. But the most important thing is, we, we target young adults. We feel like young adults, they're halfway out of the parents' pockets, right? And they have a little more independence. And so, we feel, we feel like that's where we make, it's just our opinion that we can make the biggest change there, right? And so, you know, we've, we've taught them, we teach to fundraise, up to, I believe this year, we went to, we went to Las Vegas for a tournament, a big, a big tournament that's, that's, teams from everywhere in the world are there. We go, went to San Diego, we went to Colorado. But the important thing is that we make them fundraise, right? So we can do this. And so the, the point I'm trying to make here is, I feel like we're always struggling for fields, I feel like we're always struggling. We really practice in one field, five teams practice in one field. We have to, we have to make sure that we are sort of, kind of overlapping, right? So, so we have two teams come one, one hour, another two teams, and then the last one come at the end. And, you know, we, we are, we have been fortunate enough to, for Vista Grande, our AD, John Cashner, to allow us to practice there. But it's either, you know, it's either there, or it's either at the, at Carmagnat. And we have, we have to have lights, obviously, because this is a program that's done after school. And it has to be done, like if we're using Vista Grande, it has to be done after the high school sports are done as well. And so, I just want to support the, I believe it's addition of multipurpose fields. I think it would be very beneficial to us, to our costs, to what we're doing, to our young adults. Our program is slowly growing, but it's growing, and that's the, it's been growing for the past five years slowly, but it has. And so, that, that's a good sign. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ricardo. The next speaker card is Hector Unduho. And Hector, if you can give your address also.
It's 2444 North Morrison Avenue, here in Casa Grande. Obviously, it's a, it's a big number, 67 million is, is large to get a facility like that. If we can magically get this field right now, guess what? We'd still be way short of what the demand is here. There's 46 little league teams, I think 15 Cal Ripken teams, not including the clubs, softball, baseball, soccer, like football, everybody else. So, we're behind the curve already, even with the fields. So, but more importantly, had we passed this three years ago, or six, whenever, you know, we voted on it, we would have got these fields for half the price. Now we're 67, we wait another three years from now, it's just not going to happen. And I'm being honest, they're going to say, well, it didn't pass, I was talking to Mandy, I was talking to Larry earlier, about different things. It isn't going to happen. So if it needs to happen, it, it needs to happen now. And that's just one part, getting it passed here, then we have to sell the voters in November. But, the, the reality is, is that we have to do better for our kids. There's not enough for them, and I'm just here to fight for them. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Peter Encinas?
I already spoke.
Oh, you did, okay. Sorry about that, Peter. Desiree Gill? Hi, Desiree, if you can give your address, please.
Hello, Desiree Gill, my address is 1256 East Johns Drive, here in Casa Grande. I'm here to pretty much echo what the last coaches have said. I'm the head softball coach at Casa Grande Union High School. I think everybody understands the need that our youth have here. Our city manager pointed out the need and the amount of stress that's put on us at the high school that we take on from our youth, because there's just not enough around town. Our season unfortunately ended this last Saturday, and since Saturday, I've had calls from three youth coaches around town to use our field, and that's two softball coaches and soccer coaches. And unfortunately, I had to turn them down because our fields just can't take the use right now. We, we have to spend time on working on them. And as a teacher and a coach, I hate to have to turn kids down. So just echoing what everybody else said, please just support putting that on our budget, please. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, Jennifer Apodaca? And if you can also give your address.
I want you to know where I live. I'm Jennifer Apodaca, my address is 9491 West Coral Mountain Drive. I'm, you know, just echoing what all the other coaches have said, we need it for our youth. Also, the pool. God bless our pool, it is overused, it is under-maintained, and it's not well-staffed. I have spent the past two and a half years of my life driving to Maricopa or Chandler to get my daughter active in swimming. We have some incredible athletes here that are local, that are actually getting seeded nationally and having to travel. They can't train here. My daughter won't even go in that pool because it's so disgusting. And it, because it's overused, it can't be maintained. And if we can take away some of that burden by having something that can be used year round for people to train in, we can see some amazing athletes come out of our city and represent us, and I think it's just really needed. And then you bring on the aspect of, we're building all of these homes and we're trying to market our city to all of these people from out of town. Why would they choose us over somewhere like Maricopa that has Copper Sky? That place is beautiful, it's incredible, they have all these communities, and they paid for it. Now it's our turn to step up and be competitive with those markets, so, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Kim Bettina? And Kim, please give your address.
Thank you for having me, my name's Kim Bettina, 1669 East Kylie Lane, here in Casa Grande. I am, this will be my 10th year as the Casa Grande Union High School swim coach. And every year, we have to find somewhere to swim the last half of October. Copper Sky's been nice in taking us for the past few years, because our pool's too cold. So I'm just really hoping that you will, when, if you do bring another pool in, please make it heated. Because our season goes until the second weekend in November, that is state. And I have kids going to state. I had two relays go last year, I had four individuals qualify. So, we do are getting the kids that are there. But, two of those kids swim year-round at Maricopa, because we have no pool. I can't have a season in the summer even, because the pool is so busy. So I tell my kids, go join the rec team, at least you can get some practice in before our season starts. And that's why I'm really, I mean, or even covers, could we please have covers at the old pool? When the year Coolidge swam with us, they brought their covers. And, we were able to get two more weeks out of the season because of the covers on the pool. I mean, there are so many things that we could do to make our pool better. And, like I said, heaters. I mean, when they built it, they had the ability, but they never bought the heaters. So I think now it's, the technology doesn't match anymore. Because I remember being here 20 years ago, when my daughter was nine years old and she swam for the Arizona Seals at, at CAC. And, we were trying to get a heated pool when you built this first pool. And we had huge meetings, and we came in for all these meetings, and we were here and here, and yet, no heaters were ever put in. So please, if you're going to do the pool, let's do it right this time and put heaters, then we can use it year-round. We could have water aerobics if we could find an instructor. We could have a year-round swim team, that when the CAC pool closed, Laura left and went to Florence, and then she went to Maricopa and took the year-round swim team. There's a lot of revenue, we are here between Phoenix and Tucson, those swim teams will come here, they will eat here, they will stipend the night here. It is a weekend, it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday swim meets when you're in, swim year-round. It's, you can make money off of this, in a way, for the city. But yes, please, please, please hit heaters. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, John Cashner? John, if you can give your address, please.
Address is 1956 North Camino Real. I, I think I'm here because I definitely support, as Lisa knows, I've asked to come over and speak to her and Matt a couple times about how we're falling behind providing for our youth. I came here in 1979, and the only thing that's been built since then, as far as I know, is the softball fields out on Penile. I know we've added some things, but, I know, and I was with Randy today, we were at AD meetings and, and we talk about it. We're both, every day besieged by, can we use this, can we use that? And, our fields are just getting decimated. I think that it's very important for this to pass. My concern is, we have the elementary district asking for a bond, we have the high school district asking for a bond, we have the city asking for a bond. I think they're all relevant and we need them all. I, I have to say, the last time I stood up here and spoke to the council, I got hoodwinked because Mr. Edwards, Randy Robbins and I were approached to help push across the Francisco Grande. And, to me, that's like an albatross that hangs around my neck, because every time I hear, number ones, we can't use it, they're charging too much, and yet I know the city owns the property, I'd like to see something done in that regards to recoup something, because the complaint I hear from everyone, it's too far out there, but when you have nowhere to go, and then they're charging excessive amounts of money. And I really think it's important, one of the things that I think needs to happen is, all three bonds need to have an element that the community can see that we're trying to fix the youth issue as far as things to do, whether it be the elementary district, that I've been starting to work with and talked to Lisa about, it's neighborhood schools that we've all built, and yet they sit vacant half the time. And I think that- And I think that will be taken care of on Wednesday. I think they're very learning to be cooperative. I know Randy and I would like to have our fields open all the time. That's one of the things down the road, I think, on, to bring them together. The high school bond is going to include astroturf fields. Once you get astroturf fields, you can be on them 24/7. We don't have to worry about it. It's going to be cheaper maintenance-wise and things like that. I hate to bring up Coolidge, but Coolidge now has three astroturf fields, high school, junior high, and elementary through the Water Conservation Act that they... And I think there's more need here than ever before, both indoor and outdoor. I see where these kids practice now on a space about as big as this because there's nowhere to go. So I think it's important that this community comes behind and passes all three bonds. I know that's a lot. But again, if we want to make an impact to our youth, we need to start now.
Thank you. Is it Justin Reifert? Refr. Thanks, Justin. If you can give your address.
10330 West Pasadena Drive. So just to piggyback off of what everyone else has said, it does make sense. It will bring in revenue. We, every other weekend, are traveling. They're at a small tournament, sixteen teams. We see continuous teams coming from California, New Mexico, Utah, Nevada. They would, they would come here. But we need the space. We need the city to work with the kids. The functionality between the clubs is, a club gets going, they get a certain level of talent. New kids can't join that club. You have maybe twenty to forty kids driving to the Valley or to Tucson every, you know, any night of the week. To me, that's a shame. Casa Grande is losing talent swimming now, right? Swimming talent, baseball talent, softball talent. And then we're putting these kids on the road. These are not workers. These are our workers. We're giving, you know, we're giving them away because they can't strive for better here. Then what we have here looks like crap. You go to O'Neal Park, it's covered in holes. You look at the fascia, falling off, rotted wood. They could have painted it. The, our maintenance costs, I don't want a $4,000 bench. I don't want a $3,000 bench. Whatever that was, I want batting cages. You know what I mean? So we bring our, you guys, whenever they build us parks, they don't build shade. We bring our own canopies anyways. We don't, we don't want your bench. We'll bring our chairs. Build the field. Let, give a place. Don't worry about a million-dollar beautification. I get nervous publicly speaking. I'm ready to run. But, no, it's just, it's terrible. It's a shame that we give so much opportunity away. The tax revenue, there's a reason why Casa Grande, if people want from Casa Grande, go up to Valley to go shopping, better stuff, better selection, better everything. We need to have better selection here. And I want the tax revenue here. And I don't want, I want to shop at home. But we got to start incentivizing, building it here now. And just like they said, we're spending double now because we waited three years. It probably, you guys, not your guys' fault because it's all of us, but my oldest two probably won't benefit, but I want my youngest to have something good. The culture of cohesiveness could really come together. You have baseballs, softball, fighting over the same fields, reserving fields just to, you know, even on nights that they're not going to use it, just so that they can have it just in case. We just need them.
Thank you. Oh, gosh, I can't understand this. Sal Delisandro? Is that how you say it? Sal, how do you say your last name?
Delisandro.
Delisandro. You got that, Adriana? And if you can give your address, please.
Yeah, 514 Dragon Springs. The only thing that I want to say, everything else I agree with, and just, is just in the bond, just making sure that there's money for maintenance, right, with the fields we do have. Like, that's a big concern. The dirt, you know, a lot of the fields, the soccer fields, but not just even softball. I mean, I, my girls play softball, but soccer, baseball, swimming, just the maintenance for the facilities that we currently have as well. Obviously, it's like everybody else said, we need these facilities. But we also need to maintain what we have, and that's being neglected already. And so that's, you know, I just had a girl last week roll an ankle at O'Neal Park because there's multiple holes in right field. And it doesn't take much to have somebody go and put dirt out there. And the fact that it's not being done is a down, you know, is we're letting down kids. And it's, you know, something that needs to be fixed. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. And Mark Luna. And Mark, if you can give your address also.
435 East Providence Drive. I don't need a mic. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for having us this evening. Biggest thing, again, everybody said everything. Biggest thing is I am the head football coach at Casa Grande Union High School, and I also help run a youth organization, AZ Crush. We've been in existence for the last fifteen years. AZ Crush, we have put sixty kids in the Division One, or I should say Division College, or college football, Division One, Two, and Three. We use a lot of the facilities at Union because Union has opened up the doors to us. But Vista Grande used to open up to the doors to us as well. We also have another youth football organization, Casa Grande Scorpions. This year, for the spring season, we didn't host one home game. We had to travel to Goodyear, to Surprise, to Scottsdale, to Maricopa, to Chandler, to play a home game, to play a football game because we didn't have any fields available for use for either one of our football teams, Scorpions or the AZ Crush. Our football facility right now at Casa Grande Union, we are down to a half a field. It's on the far south end because our football, our fields are so decimated from over-usage and not being able to take care of them because we constantly have youth football, youth soccer, band, high school sports. Everything goes on at Casa Grande Union. And that's one thing I can always say about our school. We open the doors to everybody. We really do. You know, and I'm not complaining about it because we are down to one field. It's just that we don't have facilities for our youth, for our younger guys. And the biggest thing is that I'm hearing everybody saying is we are in the middle of Phoenix and Tucson. Why don't we take advantage of that? We could host tournaments every weekend and make our money back. Every weekend. These tournaments, we would host those tournaments. That would open up a lot of the money that comes in, that we're spending to go to tournaments in Phoenix, that we're paying to go down to Tucson, that we're paying to go to Scottsdale, to Prescott, to California. We could host a lot of those tournaments here and bring in bigger competition. What's going to bring that is going to bring in more revenue because you're going to have people coming in and buying things. A lot of people like the smaller cities and like to come to these small towns and see the things that we have here. But again, we don't have those type of facilities yet. And again, one of the biggest ones is if we did have those facilities, are we going to be able to maintain them? We had some great facilities at one time. When they redid Cart McNapp, those facilities were nice. You go out there now, like everybody says, there's holes everywhere. We can't practice out there. You know, the lighting is a situation. You go to O'Neal Park, same thing. Fields are terrible. The fields, the community park fields are better than what we have for city fields. So again, if we could please, you know, think about it, help us out. It would definitely benefit our youth. Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the speaker cards. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak? Anyone else? Sure. Encinas, if you can give your name and address again.
Encinas Jose, 149 East Tahiti Drive, Casa Grande. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the prayer about the footprints where you get carried. Right now, I feel like I've got butt prints because I'm getting pulled up here. Just to piggyback on what Barbara said, because there's a lot of, millions of dollars that are going, that you guys are going to be discussing and voting on. And I might be putting the cart before the horse here, but I would really, would really like for you all to consider maybe just a percentage of all those projects, to take something out of that to help our marginalized, to help those people that are out there, especially with the weather that's coming up now. I hope that that can be somewhere in the consideration that take a percentage of all of that, all of those little projects, and put it together over here to help the people in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so any other questions? Would, Larry, anything else?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I thought if I could, just very quickly cover two topics that got raised. I think it's important with everybody here, the field maintenance, the ongoing maintenance. I do want to stress that with the general obligation bond, those can only be utilized for capital, infrastructure, and the like. I will say that if you listen to everybody speak tonight, you see the opportunities that additional fields could potentially bring in new revenues. That means some level of revenue back to the city. It's a small component, but ultimately that can be utilized for operations. And I know the mayor and council had a presentation from Mr. Gallegos during the budget retreat, and he made the comment the other night about the same thing, about the changes that they're making related to maintenance. Now, we've got a number of facilities that we're trying to bring up to standards, but certainly we'll take a look at that. The other item, Mr. Kajner brought this up tonight, and that's, this is the issue with Grande Sports World. We obviously have capacity out there. That particular facility is leased. The city obviously paid for that, but there is a lease on that. We still have some right in use. So staff will look into that matter as well. And again, for me, it's about finding this incremental, this incremental step to solve some of the issues today because this will be a project that will be probably eighteen to twenty-four months by the time that we start.
Okay. Okay, so any discussion from the council? Any questions, comments?
I've got a couple comments, believe it or not. But I thought it was great to see, you know, everyone here, football, soccer, softball, basketball, water aerobics, baseball, swim teams, exercise. I mean, it seems like everyone is with this. But I mean, it's important to be here tonight, important for the support. But this is half of, once we get it on, if we pass to get it on the ballot, then we need everyone's help to get out, to get it passed by the voters. And the kids are a huge part of this, and the parents. It's also for the whole community, though. I mean, think about it. Parents spend more time with kids if you're not driving all the time. And, you know, and that extra money on your taxes, you're probably going to save that in gas with, she drives up to, for two and a half years, we're driving to Chandler, you know? So that's another savings that we're going to see. But it's also for all the ages in our community. You mentioned water aerobics, swimming, heated pools. I mean, it's going to give everybody a chance, but it's just important that we're all going to have to get together and support this all the way through to November, to the election. So that's our next step after this, if we do vote to put on the election. And, you know, with the property tax, a lot of people have been, you know, I've seen the arguments, heard people asking, "Well, what about, you know, all these new rental properties and multifamily housing come to town? They're not paying property tax." Well, the people that own those are paying property tax, and people that are renting aren't paying that property tax when they write that check every month. So everyone that lives in town is participating in that. And we use other people's facilities, so let them come here and use ours and spend those sales tax dollars right here in Casa Grande. You know, I mean, that's what it's about. And those other places that have these nice facilities, their property tax is much higher than ours, and that's how they get them. So if we want to invest in our future and our community, I mean, this is a great way to do it. And it's going to help sell more houses, like they said. So that's going to, you know, bring that rate down as we add more assessed value within the community. So, I mean, it's sorely needed, and like they say, the best time to plant a tree or the best time to build a field was three years ago, right? Anyway, thank you all for coming, support tonight. And I hope, just remember, we got to push this through, you know, all the way. So it's not just tonight.
Yeah, I would say thank you as well. We need your help, too. I'm all for this. I'm all for our youth, and I believe we all are, you know? And we understand it's a process, and we're going to need to work together. Once again, CG has always come together, and we can do it. But we're going to need your help as well.
Okay, no, I wanted to thank all of you. You know, this is something that obviously we've discussed for years. We've had many of you in this room. I've gotten phone calls. I played bongo with some of you that are always talking about, you know, some of the needs in the community. But just thank you to all of you coaches, all of you guys that have dedicated your lives to, you know, working with our youth and developing these athletes and leaders in our community. And, you know, with your passion, and many of you are longtime citizens here in Casa Grande that have done this for decades, John Kajner. And so we truly appreciate it. We hear what you're saying. You know, we believe that this is a need. It's not, as you can see with the presentation that our city manager gave on, you know, it's definitely going to be a difficult, you know, a heavy lift to go out there and ask the citizens to vote for this. And so we wanted to make sure that everyone here today, you know, see what, you know, the challenges that we're facing as a growing community. And that's all the, obviously, public safety. We did a survey. We wanted to hear from you, the community, what's important to you. And that, number one, was public safety. We need a safe community. So we want to make sure that we continue to invest, to excel, and bring great quality safety to our community. Second was roads and infrastructure. So these are the things that the community said, day in and day out, all over social media. They gave it, put it in our survey, that they want roads, road, infrastructure, you know, to keep up with the growth and to continue to the growth. You know, Larry showed this slide on the millions of dollars that go into public works. Unfortunately, that's where the big-ticket items are, but we have to continue to do that. We have to maintain our roads. We have to build new roads and sewer and all the infrastructure that comes with the growth and brings us into the future. So those are big-ticket items that we have, we need to do. So that, you know, and third on that was the amenities, and that's where this comes in. You know, people want to see the amenities. They want to see that quality of life. They need, we need activities for our young people. So all of us up here understand, we all raised our families here. We have used those parks. We have used the swimming pool. We have all utilized all of these services here and see the demand for us to continue to improve. But how are we going to get there, you know, the finance part? So this is, you know, where we are. And again, we appreciate the different groups that are here today that encouraged us, that pushed us, that, you know, advocated because we feel this is a good opportunity to go to the public because we have all of your support. So like my fellow council members said, we need your help. This is not something that just the city council is going to be able to do. We support it. We will be out there, but we, you know, we're going to need your help pushing this forward. So again, thank you to all of you and everything that you do for our youth. And not only our youth, but all ages, our young adults, our seniors, you know, because they're all going to be able to use these facilities. So we appreciate everyone, and we appreciate the staff continuing to find ways. You know, we've been working with our school districts to try to find solutions, temporary solutions. But we are at maximum capacity. We know that. So it's something that we are really hoping that we can, you know, get through here. So, you know, again, thank you to the staff. Thank you for everyone being here. So I think with that, you know, I guess we'll see where you all want to go. Oh, yeah. Oh, sure.
Lisa, I meant to ask one thing. With the three bonds, has there been consideration of how are you going to attack that? I mean, I think if three separate entities go out there and they're all throwing stuff against the wall, I think it has to be considered effort that the three work together. Otherwise, you could see all failing.
And we really can't discuss that, right? That's not something we, Brett, can you comment on that?
Yeah, I think that everybody has to do different. But just as a reminder, that once council places this on the ballot, we're constrained from using any city resources to push it. And I think that's why you're hearing a lot from the council tonight and otherwise saying it's a good grassroots movement, and that will need to continue. The city will be able to answer questions. We will be able to put out factual information concerning the bond to make sure that people know that. And I'm certain that the city manager and otherwise, you know, will be asked to speak to different areas. Mayor and council will still be able to act as themselves, but we can't use any city resources to do that moving forward. moving forward. But it is important for everyone to be able to continue to express how they feel about the different bonds.
Right. That makes sense, John? Okay, okay. Okay, so what's the pleasure here of the council?
We got to go to the vote.
Okay.
Ever ask for it.
Resolution first, okay.
Resolution number 5767, a resolution of the city council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, ordering and calling a special bond election to be held concurrently with the November 4, 2025, general election to submit to the qualified electors of the city the question of authorizing the issuance and sale of up to $67 million of general obligation bonds of the city designated or providing for, the manner in which the election is conducted, the translation of election materials, voter registration deadlines and early voting dates and related matters, and ratifying all actions taken and to be taken with respect to the election in furtherance of this resolution.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve resolution number 5767 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, so if we can please get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedellin?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
I'm definitely going to say yes, but I want to say thanks to staff really for putting this together very quickly for us, and Melissa Mendy for driving it. Thank you. Yes, definitely.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So again, thank you for being here. If you want to sit through another hour for our budget, please.
Come on, it's a good time.
You can stay, Coach.
You can go get a margarita and come back if you want, but thank you. Thank you everyone for coming. Thank you.
All right, madam mayor.
May I also vote?
Yeah.
We'll wait just a minute until we get this. You what? Oh, yeah, go ahead. There should be some back there.
Is there?
Yeah, maybe go grab one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Larry, we lost a couple council members here, so.
Why, they're grabbing water. Water.
They went to get some water.
Oh.
Want to call a break? Okay, we'll just do a five-minute break.
Yeah.
Okay.
You got to say it. You got to say it, don't you?
I did, didn't I? Head reconvene here. And so next on the agenda is item K1.
Of the council, I was hoping everybody would stick around for this next portion because there's some key elements in this.
I know.
In any event, I do want to just kind of set the tone for this budget meeting, and I know the tentative budget consideration. I know mayor and council sat through about a six-hour, seven-hour budget retreat where the budget was introduced department by department. But just real quick, I want to highlight before I hand the baton back to Brenda, but ultimately, the fiscal year 26 budget enhances and improves existing levels of service. Now, we've talked a lot about levels of service. We are achieving that in Casa Grande essentially through expanding our programs, our events, our initiatives through strategic allocation of resources. And that's just a very unique way of saying that we are moving money in between programs that are most effective for our community, right? So this budget does that. We're doing it through new technologies. I know you all heard about that, some of our proactive partnerships that we get to see and take advantage of. But the important message that I want to stress today is that we're doing that while maintaining our current tax rates. And this council, this and past councils have been very straightforward about the fact that we typically do not propose budget with revenue enhancements. Obviously, just consider the bond that will give the voters the opportunity to evaluate whether or not they want to see increases to accelerate some project. But I think it's important, it's an important message. I know Mayor Pro Tem talked about it, about tax rates and the like. Casa Grande does have very competitive tax rates, and so it's important to note that. Our general fund budget proposes total 76.6 million, which is a slight increase from a year ago. Our proposed expenditure budget across all funds is 387 million. And just a couple of components, because obviously personnel, I've talked about capital, so I'm skipping that one, but our personnel expenses, obviously, our most precious asset in the organization is our human capital, and we continue the market-based compensation system. We're continuation of our insurance plans. I know you, essentially, you got to hear about that in April as well. And we're adding nine new positions, and we'll talk a little more in detail. But I want Brenda, Ms. Hassler, to ultimately go through some of the revenue stream, just for those that may be watching, so they understand how the money is collected and how it's being allocated in the fiscal year budget. Brenda, thank you.
Okay, so first off, I want to just touch on some of the major assumptions that were made when we were putting the budget together. Larry mentioned personnel. We did include a merit step increase of 3.25% for all eligible employees. And the total personnel costs projected in the budget and proposed in the budget is $62 million. Within that, there are pension retirement rates. The Arizona State Retirement Rate is going down slightly for fiscal year 26. The fire personnel contribution rates are going up in both the fire personnel employer contribution rates and the police personnel contribution rates. For revenues, we had no revenue enhancements or additional sources of revenues that we're proposing in the budget this fiscal year, or for fiscal year 26. The local sales tax revenue is based on a five-year trend, and we've adjusted that conservatively for possible legislative action and/or potential economic downturn that impacts the general fund, capital construction funds, youth funds, and recreation funds. The general fund state shared revenues for fiscal year 26 numbers include transaction privilege tax, urban revenue sharing, state shared sales tax, and auto-in lieu taxes. This slide shows you by major general fund revenue sources where the majority of our revenues are coming from. And as you can see, it's the local sales tax and the intergovernmental revenues, your state shared revenues, your HERF, state sales tax are included in intergovernmental revenues. You can see for our investment earnings, we're projecting a slight decrease in those investment earnings in next fiscal year, just based on the current economic climate. This is a slide that I think you see in almost every budget presentation across the state, and it's proposed by county. So for Pinellas County, of every dollar in tax it's collected, 26% of that goes to the county. 7% goes to cities and towns. 36% goes to school districts. 14% goes to Central Arizona College, and 16% goes to all the other special taxing districts within the county. So I'm going to skip this slide for just a second, and I'll come back to it. In the presentation that was presented on the RCA, there was a tax screen for a truth in taxation hearing, and I have removed that from this presentation tonight because we are maintaining our tax rate and our proposed property tax levy less the amount attributable to new construction does not exceed the amount of our tax levy for last fiscal year. So we're not required to have a truth in taxation hearing this year. So I just wanted you to be aware that that was intentionally removed from the presentation for tonight. So the primary property tax levy for fiscal year 25 was $5,878,352. We start with the net assessed valuation that Nick Dodd, our financial advisor, talked about and how they come up with those amounts as far as the tax rates. And of that $620 million in net assessed valuation, $31 million of that was attributable to the value of new construction. So the net assessed value minus the new construction is the $589 million. The maximum tax rate that the city could charge and impose on the taxpayers without a truth in taxation hearing is 99.9967. The city is not proposing that we go to that level. That would cause a growth in the property tax levy associated with new construction of $310,000. The maximum property tax levy, which is the calculation of the net assessed value times the rate, the levy could be proposed at $6,188,277. The city has, staff is proposing that we put our primary property tax levy at $5,987,000. That next line is a little misleading, and then it says it's a primary increase in primary property tax levy exclusive of new construction. We are not proposing an increase. That's why it's a negative number. And we are not proposing a percentage increase in the property tax rate. That negative 3.25% is the difference between what the maximum tax rate we could impose of the .9967 and what we are proposing of the .9643, which is our current primary property tax rate. So we're proposing to keep the rate the same. And I'm going to go back to that other slide, just as a comparative. This is what our tax levy would be comparative between FY '25 and '26 if we proposed at the maximum levy, that it would create a total increase of $1,009,000. So that change, while it can be considered significant in light of other situations we have going, we chose to maintain the property tax rate at what it was. So this one shows the combined primary property tax rate for FY '26, with the primary being maintained at the .9643, and the secondary going up slightly to .4154. And the secondary tax rate is the calculation of what has to be used for bond payments. This slide is a fiscal year 26 budget summary that starts with our projected FY '25 fund balances and what we anticipate the total projected revenues being for FY '26. And this is for all funds across the city, general fund, highway user revenue fund, all the sanitation, all the proprietary funds, wastewater, water, and all the internal service funds, comparative to the proposed expenditures for each of those funds as well, and any transfers in and out between funds to help with capital projects and internal service funds as well. The revenue stabilization is the 50% of the proposed general fund expenditures of $76,602. And that number could change depending on council's direction with reducing the 50% down to the 30% level.
And Madam Mayor, if I can, just add a point to that. You saw earlier in the CIP presentation that we're recommending $15 million. There is a provision that's been crafted in the resolution that would allow that reserve to drop for this fiscal year to roughly 30% if the council is supportive of those $15 million.
There, as part of the final budget adoption, council will also approve the consolidated fee schedule and any proposed rate changes. We met with departments to determine which departments were going to propose rate changes. Those rate changes have been posted on the city website. And it affects all departments who charge rates or fees for services, enterprises and governmental activities and services. We focused on fair and reasonable rates and rate structures, basing that on the cost of providing the services, operating revenues and expenses, any necessary reserve requirements, any debt service or capital requirements that were necessary, whether there was an appropriate recovery rate that we could apply to those services, taking into account the customer base, the collections, the cash flows. Who makes up our customer base? Is it residential versus commercial, full-time versus seasonal residents, as well as fixed income residents? The consolidated fee schedule, community services, proposed various recreation fee changes. The court proposed probation compliance with quarter ordered fees changes. Finance is proposing a credit card surcharge be charged for all credit cards that the city takes for payment of utilities and other services. Fire is increasing various construction permit fees and inspection fees, false alarm fees, and various annual inspection fees as well. Planning and development increased various fees to reflect the actual cost for the services that they're performing. Police removing the bicycle registration fee that is, has been continued on the fee schedule for years but has never been charged. And sanitation, various landfill fees to be increased. Larry briefly touched on the authorized. Larry briefly touched on the authorized positions and personnel, and that the budget does include nine new positions that are proposed. Video production specialist in the city manager's PIO office, business integration analyst in finance IT, an account clerk position in finance IT, an admin assistant in HR, management analyst in fire, police officer in PD, animal control officer in PD, a court clerk in the courts, and an unsheltered initiative position, and one re-class for an assistant planner to planner in the planning department. The personnel costs, wages and salaries is the biggest portion of that, with your retirement costs, healthcare costs, and all the other benefits over time, part-time costs being part of that as well. The other benefit costs are your clothing, auto, cellphone, internet allowances, social security, Medicare, and workers' comp. So this expenditure summary is an expenditure limitation comparison between fiscal year '25 and '26. You have your budgeted expenditures of $387, $557 million, $57,000 in the proposed budget, and then we get to take an adjustment for certain reconciling exclusions, estimated exclusions. And those exclusions involve grant exclusions, HIRF expenditure exclusions, debt service, and carryforwards from the previous fiscal year. The largest portion of that, $222 million, is $124 million of carryforwards, which correlates to the $124 million in carryforwards Larry mentioned previously. This slide shows the available fund balance and the breakout of fund balance and the revenue stabilization reserves. And should council opt to lower that reserve, then that revenue stabilization number will decrease. Oops, sorry, flipping pages and... This shows you where our general fund expenditures are by category. So of the general fund, a large portion is your personnel expense and your transfers out to other funds for capital and the like. This shows you the general fund expenditures by department. With the personnel costs, you can see are the largest portions of most of the departments, with your materials and supplies and contractual services filling in the rest of those. And as Larry previously mentioned, public safety, which is a big concern of, of the citizens, is the vast majority of the expenditures by department. And then this one just shows you the actual numbers by department. Again, the city manager's number looks way high, but that is because of the $15 million and, and the other reservations that we put in there, or contingencies that we put in there to include them in the budget, with Public Works having the, the $220 million being the largest portion. And then this goes back to the expenditures by fund, just that we discussed earlier, just in a pie chart form. Hey Larry, you ready to do capital projects again?
Any questions?
Okay, so we're starting to draw towards the end of our budget calendar. So with the tentative budget adoption tonight and the CFD tentative budget adoptions, we will publish those tentative budget summaries and the primary and secondary property tax items that have to be published again here in the month of May. And then in June, on June 2nd is when we will start holding the public hearings on the budget and the property tax levy, with adoption of the final budget and the first reading of the tax levy for the city for, and for the CFDs being on June 2nd. Final budget adoption will be June 16th, is when that is proposed to be adopted. The, I think it's better on this next slide. So on this next slide, this is the next key dates. But I want to point out that on the second line, the publication of the '26 tentative budget does include the truth in taxation. This calendar kind of remains the same from year to year. So just because everything's on here doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna happen each and every year. So the truth in taxation will not happen this year, which then takes out, under the public hearings, the first publication and the second publication of the truth in taxation, and those dates are not applicable as well. Let's see, and then you will notice that we have the special meeting to adopt the fiscal year '26 budget on June 16th, post it to the website on June 20th. June 16th should also be the first reading of the, to adopt the property tax levy, and we have it in here on June 17th, so that should be June 16th. And then we did have the final reading scheduled for the July 7th meeting. However, we are aware that if council cancels that meeting, we will move that to the July 21st meeting. So we do have some leeway with that as well. So tonight, the resolution that we are proposing is to set the fiscal year '26 tentative budget per all the schedules and the tentative budget forms for the state, and for council to direct staff to publish the notices for purposes of the budget tax levy hearings and budget adoption, and to authorize action for contingency expenditures. And with that, we'll take any questions you might have.
All right, any questions? Comments?
Right here, Matt.
Here, Matt came out now, so I was joking.
Matt? No, no, you don't have it?
We've covered it very well, thank you.
Okay, no, thank, thank you. And I know it's a couple times we've been through this already, but thank you for presenting. And, and we appreciate Larry, you, you going through the CIP when everyone was here, because that really makes a difference on, you know, why we're moving the way we are on, on the bond. So appreciate that. So, okay, so with that, we are, so there's no discussion. So can I call for a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 5768, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the tentative estimate of the amount required for the public expenses for the city of Casa Grande for the fiscal year 2025, 2026, adopting a tentative budget setting forth receipts and expenditures, the amounts actually levied, and the amounts estimated as collectible for the previous fiscal year, and the amount proposed to be raised by direct property taxation for the various purposes, and giving notice of the time for hearing taxpayers for adopting a budget and for fixing the tax levies.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve resolution number 5768 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, so if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dooyin?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Okay, here we go, Mary.
I'm sorry, this is long. I'm gonna talk really fast.
Okay, good, Mary. Thank you.
Because there's four documents that I need your, your approval on tonight. So we're gonna talk about the Community Development Block Grant, the Consolidated Plan. It's a five-year consolidated plan from program years 2025 through 2029. We started this, well, talk a little bit about community development. It's a Community Development Block Grant is a federally, federal program authorized under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. It provides annual grants to cities and counties to develop a viable urban community, provide decent housing, suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities, primarily serving the low to moderate income persons. Part of the consolidated, and part of being a CDBG entitlement community is we do have to conduct a five-year consolidated plan and prepare a plan every five years, and it lasts for five years. We have to do an annual action plan completed every year, and a public participation plan, and an analysis of impediment to fair housing. So the Consolidated Plan is designed to help local jurisdictions assess their affordable housing and community development needs and market conditions, and to make data-driven based, place-based investment decisions. So we started the process in December, and we conducted community outreach. And thank goodness for our, we have a very vocal group. I mean, there are a lot of the people that were here tonight attended my actual focus groups that we held. So we held three focus groups here in city council chambers to discuss public services, housing, and public infrastructure. We had 36 community members that were invited to attend, so got a lot of good data out of that. We also did two community outreach. We went to the silent witness night, and we also went to Dorothy Powell Senior Center and asked the same questions and had them do the same questions that we asked on the survey. And so we compiled all the data. We had, thank goodness for our public information officer, 889 responses to our survey. So they range from all over the place, so it was interesting information. Then we also held two public meetings at Dorothy Powell Senior Center and Mondo Anaya Center. So our community outreach results for affordable housing, you can tell, everything is kind of equal. I took the medium. We had, the exercise was, people had to choose between low, medium, and high as far as their interest. And so these are the results from the medium and high, high needs that we... So this is what kind of guides us as far as what we're gonna put on our annual action plans. So affordable housing, as you can see, it ranges anywhere from energy efficiency improvements to owner occupied housing, all the way down to ADA improvements, senior transitional housing. Special needs is pretty, homeless persons was high on the list. Seniors, persons with severe mental disabilities, physical disabilities, domestic violence, demolition and clearance for code enforcement type things, activities, cleanup, maintain abandoned lots, code enforcement nuisance lawsuits. Economic development, again, a lot of interest in needing small business assistance, workforce development, attraction of new businesses, public improvement, stormwater, sewer, water quality, street improvements. So these are, all these items we typically do anyway every year, so this just kind of guides us where we need to be. Public facilities, multipurpose, we've talked a little bit about that tonight, a whole lot about that tonight. Community centers needing for senior youth and healthcare, parks and recreation facilities, libraries, homeless shelters, food banks. Public services, that had a wide variety of choices, so we had a lot of explanation or choices on what they felt like we needed in our community. We also looked at a lot of the data that comes through, the census data, and for our housing needs assessment, overcrowding, lack of complete kitchen, lack of complete plumbing, and cost burden were our highest needs for housing. Overcrowding, there's about 800 homeowners and renter occupied units that are experiencing overcrowded right now. Cost burden, as you can see, we have a lot of renters. There's 2,500 renters facing cost burden of greater than 30% of income, and 1,800 facing a cost burden of greater than 50% of their income. For homeowners, it's 2,200 facing cost burden of greater than 30%, and 1,075 facing more than 50% of their income. Here's just a chart of the census data as far as household income. We have 36% of our, our population is still below, it's below the 35% or $35,000 area medium income. So we do have a higher, high population of low to moderate income residents. Move on to the analysis of impediments to fair housing. We have to look at the demographic information and the employment and economic data. We look at our laws and our fair housing practice and our fair housing choices in Casa Grande. We, or we looked at the data and kind of came up with the five impediments that we feel like we can impact. And one is the need for awareness and education on what fair housing is. We provide a fair housing train, a free fair housing training through Southwest Fair Housing Council. Ours will be held in June this year. And we also have, provide free fair housing materials to residents if they do so ask. We also, one of the, another impediment is limited supply of affordable housing. We continue as a city to work with developers and community organization to increase supply. We'll continue with our owner occupied housing rehab program, and we encourage housing development for special needs populations and minorities. Impediment number three, government policies. We seek new and additional incentives for developers to undertake affordable projects, and we amend zoning codes to allow for diverse housing options. Impediment number four, awareness of potential discrimination. We increase house, housing choice alternatives for disabled and families with children. And impediment number five, lack of assistance for homebuyers. Looking at the possibility of, in the future, establishing a homebuyer assistance program or conducting inventory assessment of boarded up houses and focus on revitalizing, revitalizing those homes. The next plan was the public participation plan. We have to identify for HUD, how are we including our community and getting them involved in making our decisions with how to use our CDBG funds? So in our five-year consolidated plan, so we are, we hold public meetings, we do focus groups, we do a survey, we post all of these plans for 30-day public comment, and we'll do one public hearing in the community and then tonight for the city council approval. The annual action plan is one public meeting, 30-day public comment period, and public hearing and city council approval. Analysis of impediment, we allow a 30-day public comment period and do a public hearing and city council approval. Annual consolidated annual performance plan, the CAPR, is a 15-day public comment period and council approval. And substantial amendments, if we choose to make any amendments to any of the plans, we'll do public meeting, a 30-day public comment period, and public hearing and city council approval. The annual action plan for this year, unfortunately, I still don't know what our CDBG allocation is. We're hoping it's at level funding, so our committee has, had met and is gonna make recommendations tonight. Based on the, the surveys and all of the data that we received is how we came up with the plans and the applications that we received as to what we're recommending for funding tonight. The CDBG national objectives, they have to benefit the low to moderate income persons, aid in the prevention of elimination of slime or blight, and meet a need for having a particular agency, or urgency, excuse me. So what we're proposing tonight is, based on last year's funding recommendation, we would like to provide a grant to Casa Grande Homeless Services, Community Action Human Resource Agency for $10,000, Senior Connections by Seeds of Hope for $15,896, Advocacy Services for Victims and Homeless Women and Children by Against Abuse for $12,000, the Seeds Employment Services by the Opportunity Tree for $7,100, the Boys and Girls Club of the Sun Corridor for $6,080, and Casa Grande Alliance for $14,111. And that's for homeless services as well. For community development, Cottonwood Gardens is a neighborhood out on Cottonwood and Thornton, and they do not have fire hydrants in their neighborhood, so we're gonna undertake that project. Affordable housing, we would like to continue with... Affordable housing, we would like to continue with the owner occupied housing rehab for eighty-seven thousand four hundred and three thou, or three dollars. And we want to continue with the enhanced code enforcement officer for seventy-five thousand four hundred and ten dollars, and then the planning administration for eighty-six thousand five hundred and eighty. So, any questions?
So Mary, on the funding, any idea when we're going to hear anything?
I, I had correspondence with my program manager from HUD in Phoenix, and he said he was going to have a meeting today, and he'd get back to me, but I haven't heard.
So no one has really heard?
No, no. There's nothing posted.
Okay.
There's nothing been posted.
There's no rumors on what's going to happen, okay.
[laughing] Just don't know.
Just waiting, okay. Well, thank you. Any questions, anyone, comments?
No.
All right. I guess not. Mary, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Well, good luck. Let us know once you find out.
Yes.
On the funding. Okay.
It is a public hearing.
That's right. Okay, so it is a public hearing. If there's no questions, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Open the public hearing? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And if we can get a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5766, a resolution of the mayor and the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, five-year consolidated plan, analysis of impediments to fair housing, public participation plan, and an annual action plan for use of CDBG funds.
Okay.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move for approval of resolution number 5766 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember B. Dillon?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Looks like we're done with the agenda, so we'll go ahead, item N on reports. So, why don't we start with you, Becca?
Just a couple of things. I was able to attend Union's golf tournament over the weekend, and it was great, and really thinking about the bond. That's where our kids start to learn sports and really get better, and so I'm excited that we have that great start and this opportunity moving forward. And then also, it's teacher appreciation week, so if you have not yet said thank you to a teacher, make sure you say thank you to a teacher.
Thank you. You're, you're still a teacher, right?
[laughing]
Okay, Fred, how about you?
Uh, no report.
Okay. Matt?
Just the youth commission applications and re-applications are due by Wednesday to the clerk's office. They've been very helpful, thank you. And next Friday on the sixteenth is the Chamber Biz Outlook, Biz Outlook Luncheon for Small Business Month. So that'll be fun.
Okay, thank you.
Enjoyed the fellowship at 5:03?
Yes.
Yeah, that was really nice, and so that, you see, and what else we got going on? That's it for me.
Okay. Okay, Sean?
Uh, well, I attended the Dia de los Niños with Mayor Fitzgibbons, and a great event for future capitalists, for all the kids out there. [laughing] Also, I attended the Pennell Forty this last weekend, Pennell Forty Gala. It was a real big success, sold out immediately, pretty much, you know, and hopefully we raised a lot of money for the kids in Pennell County. Only other thing, Mother's Day's Sunday, don't forget Mother's Day.
[laughing] That was something I wanted to say. Happy Mother's Day.
You got, you did everything, right? You're good?
Yep.
No, I know everyone's ready to go, but as far as events, you know, this time of year is when we're really living this community. You know, there's so many activities that are going on, so, so just thank you to everyone. Danny, your group did such a great job on that Dia de los Niños.
Yeah.
Pulled Sean on stage with me up there too, and so I really appreciate you being there, but, but really, it was just such a great family event, and there just to have the different nonprofit agencies on the services they provide. But what I love, that you had the young entrepreneurs that were there, and for those of you that weren't there, they had booths of all these young kids that sell, like they're, they're literally entrepreneurs, so anything from, I mean, there were so many different things, charms, jewelry, baked goods, what is the robot or the stuff that they make? I can't think of what they make. They made pens and stuff like that.
3D printing.
3D, the 3D printing. But it was just really neat. I just really, that event, you know, just gets better and better, and so I just appreciate all of your staff and the great thing that they do. It was really, really a lot of fun. I had my grandbabies there. So, so let's see, yes, the fire, congratulations Chief Keen on that, everyone's really excited about it, so thank you. You know, a lot of different things going on as far as business expansion, you know, Banner had, they're opening their Endoscopy, Endoscopy Department. Is that how you say Endoscopy?
[inaudible]
Yes, so they've invested [laughing] eleven million dollars, and so it's so nice to see them expanding and providing, continuing to provide, you know, quality healthcare. This is Nurses Week, so if you also say thank you to a nurse, you know, it is Nurses Week, I'll be going to Banner tomorrow and reading a proclamation and thanking them for everything that they do. Sean, you did talk about your grand opening, congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
For your tactical firearms. I'm telling you, I, I've gone to a lot of ribbon cuttings, and I don't know, I mean, there's a lot of gun, gun lovers there.
[laughing]
I was really surprised, and that was all foreign, all of that was a little foreign to me, but, but no, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
On your business and investing here. Little League, you know, there was a lot of talk about fields, and, you know, I went to the opening day and saw all the excitement with the Little League and everything, you know, that goes on, and, and I was notified that the Fitzgibbons Law Team was in the professional, or I mean, in the, in the championship game for the girls softball. And so I went to the game Friday, and they won, and they played Walton Orthodontics. So, so it was a great game with these ten-year-old girls, and were just amazing. So congratulations to all the girls and, and all the coaches. Happy Cinco de Mayo to everyone. I went to an event this weekend at St. Anthony's, great Cinco de Mayo event. For those of you that missed it, I'm sorry. And, and then Pennell Forty, again, Sean, I know you're on that, that board, and thank you for everything you guys do. I mean, it's truly amazing, and all the scholarships were in that time of year, where all of the, these kids are applying for scholarships and graduating, and I'm sure our next council meeting, we're going to be hearing a lot about graduations and everything there. And then grand openings, Hobby Lobby's open. I was there today, bought my, bought my items, I went at lunchtime, and, and it was great seeing what was going on. The fire, the fire alarms were going off when I was there, so I think they were testing them. And then Jersey Mike's is opening, so make sure you head over on Wednesday. They will be, have their ribbon cutting Wednesday afternoon, so that's it. Plenty of other things, but that's enough for now, so. Again, good evening, everyone, have a great night, and thank you for everything. Okay, we'll adjourn.